Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Four Oaks. Being that it's the time and the place that we have called this meeting, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order for the Town of Four Oaks for a special economic development announcement. And I believe the county's going to do the same.
Yes, and on behalf of the Johnston County Commissioners, I will welcome everybody and call this special meeting, consider an economic incentive grant for Four Oaks and the area, to order.
And with that, Harold King, I'd like to ask you, if you would, open us up in a word of prayer, please.
We pray with each other. Father God, we give thanks to this day. We thank you for the opportunities you give us in life. We thank you for this opportunity. We come to maybe in some way make our community a little more vibrant and a little better place to worship, to live, and to work. We ask that you be with us in the things we do and that we honor you in all things we do. For we ask in thy holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Chris Johnson, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. What a great day for Four Oaks and Johnston County. We've got a lot of people here that have showed a lot of interest in our community, and we're glad to have you. We have an alliance that we have started, oh, a year, a year and a half ago now, and it's paying dividends. Reed Williams is our economic developer. If you would, stand up, Reed. Let's give him a hand. He's worked real hard. The board for this alliance seems, majority of them are here. If you're involved with this board, I know I see the mayor from Dunn's here. If you would, please stand up. Let us give you a hand as well. Thank you, guys, for all the hard work that you've done. I'm going to allow Butch to introduce some other special people that are here today. And once again, welcome to Four Oaks and thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, we do have, from Johnston County Economic Development Advisory Board, so if you're on here, would you please stand up? I see a few, at least on the back rows there. There we go. Thank y'all for what you do. And also wanted to recognize some important folks to us all across Johnston County. First, Representative Larry Strickland. Larry, thank you for all you do for us. And I understand Senator Jackson had a previous engagement and couldn't be here, but I did want to recognize from Congressman Rousers' office, Katie Smith. And then from Senator Tillis' office, Adam Caldwell. Thank you. Yes, so at this time, I would open the public hearing for the economic incentive grant for, on behalf of the Johnston County Commissioners.
And I will also open the public hearing for the Town of Four Oaks for an economic incentive grant.
All right. And at this time, I'll call on Chris Johnson, our Economic Development Director, to present the project background.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners and town leadership. It is again a deed and honor and privilege to present to you an opportunity that could not have been made possible without the willingness of Johnston County residents to share in the vision that was cast nearly thirteen years ago by many individuals with us here today. Yes, many times, public servants received the attention. However, today, I would like to recognize the true economic development heroes. Those are Edsel Johnson, Johnny Johnson, Travis Byrd, William Upchurch, and their families, who agreed that it was time to provide an opportunity for current residents and citizens, as well as future young people, to have the quality jobs right here at home. And with the leadership and the partnership of Johnston County, the Town of Four Oaks, and under the leadership of individuals such as the late Commissioner Wade Stewart, it is on these shoulders that those, that we're now standing on today. You've cut on the TV this morning. You received reports from every station of traffic entering into Wake County and the Triangle Park region. Currently, we have nearly sixty thousand residents that leave Johnston County daily to work elsewhere. This should be alarming to everyone. Nonetheless, today's project announcement allows us to continue this growth, job growth journey, and allow our residents the opportunity to have high-paying, good jobs right here at home. I'm honored to stand before you, this commission, to present to you a project for your consideration and turn around the mass exodus of employees leaving our county. It is Beckton Dickinson's desire to invest and build a state-of-the-art thirty thousand square foot Class A medical device processing facility that will be located in the Four Oaks Business Park. In addition to the over twenty-five million dollar investment, Beckton Dickinson's project has the ability to create over twenty-two new jobs in the foreseeable future with an average salary of eighty-three thousand dollars. This is nearly double the county average. As I have mentioned to you many a times, and would like to reiterate again to our tax-paying citizens, that any economic development incentive comes at no risk to the taxpayers, that these incentives only come from the company's investment. This equates to a percentage of the taxes BD pays on the twenty-five million or more of the new investment. If the required benchmarks set forth in the agreement are not met, no incentive is given. Again, this comes at no risk to the taxpayers and citizens of Johnston County. As with all economic development incentive grants, this has been vetted and approved by the Johnston County Economic Development Board, which was earlier recognized. This board consists of fourteen business, civic, and community leaders that has a representation from every municipality in Johnston County. As customary, this project and investment projections have also been evaluated by Dr. Mike Walden, a retired professor and economist from North Carolina State. His report shows that the monetary investment, as well as the jobs and ancillary job growth, are projected to be over fifteen million dollars annually for the county and for the Town of Four Oaks. Again, new investment, no risk. We respectfully ask that the Johnston County Commissioners consider an economic development grant presented before you, as well as the Town of Four Oaks, to be awarded to Beckton Dickinson. At this time, I'd like to call on County Attorney Jennifer Slusher to talk about the four things that I kind of sometimes steal from her, talking about competition. Does it meet the jobs requirement? Does it meet the competition requirement? And also, does it provide a better, diverse economy here in Johnston County, which this project definitely does? After which, then I would like to introduce Mr. Travis Anderton with Beckton Dickinson and invite him to say and make a few comments. So, Jennifer?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I offer for your consideration a resolution authorizing incentives for an economic development project proposed by Beckton Dickinson and Company and described by Mr. Johnson. In reviewing these incentive grant opportunities, as Mr. Johnson said, there are several factors that you must consider when you make your determination. Number one is job creation. Number two is capital investment. Number three is competition. And number four is diversification of the economy. So, keeping those factors in mind, I would like to review with you the framework of the proposed agreement with Beckton Dickinson and Company. And all of this is contained within the draft resolution that you have in your seats and that we will make available to the public. In order to receive these incentives from the county, Beckton Dickinson and Company is required to meet certain performance requirements. These commitments include capital investment of not less than twenty million dollars to develop, construct, and operate a medical manufacturing facility in the Four Oaks Business Park. The employment commitment for this project is twenty permanent, full-time jobs, working on the project site at an average salary of not less than seventy-five thousand dollars with benefits. The capital investment is estimated to be completed by December 2024, and the job creation is expected to be completed by 2025. You may note that these numbers and these projections are a little bit different than what Mr. Johnson projected to you. That is because this is the minimum investment. We expect that the investments will exceed the minimums, as Mr. Johnson has told you. The incentive proposal is a cash grant that, for Johnston County, is a cash grant that will be made in seven annual payments, which will only be made upon, once the minimum capital investment is reached, and will only be paid upon ad valorem taxes actually paid and received with respect to the annual investments that are placed on the project site through the grant period. If the incentives are granted, Beckton Dickinson must provide certification of the investments and employment. Grant payments are conditioned upon Beckton Dickinson paying in full its ad valorem tax bills for all of its properties situated in the county that is subject to ad valorem taxation. They must be current on all payments that are owed to Johnston County, current on filing of all annual property tax listings, and have no appeal pending regarding the valuation of property at the project site. Further, they are to not be in violation of any other obligation or county ordinances or regulations. The agreement will provide for recapture provisions if Beckton Dickinson does not carry out and maintain the terms of the proposed agreement. Finally, in talking about the four factors for consideration that you are required to consider prior to deciding how you would like to proceed, number one, there is a job creation requirement. Does the project create new permanent jobs? And in this case, the answer is yes. Capital investment, does it increase the tax base? The answer is yes. There's a minimum of twenty million dollars, but it is anticipated that it will be more. According to the Walden report that was referenced by Mr. Johnson, private sector annual operating impact and direct and indirect induced impacts will substantially exceed this twenty million dollar investment. Finally, we need to think about the initial but for, the necessity determination, as to whether or not the incentive is required for the project to move forward. This is a competitive situation, and we were competing with several locations, and but for the incentives that are being offered by Johnston County and the Town of Four Oaks, Beckton Dickinson may have chosen another site. The project does meet all of the county's incentive policies for this type of project. The proposed agreement meets all of the policies for the programs that are more particularly described by Mr. Johnson and what we talked about a little bit earlier. And of course, the final approval can only take place in a public meeting that is properly noticed, which this was. Finally, we look at diversification of the economy, and diversification of the economy includes job creation and increasing the tax base, and that is the indicator of net public benefit that arises from the incentive. And certainly, this makes this sector of the economy and this location attractive for additional development. This is all met through the fact that this medical manufacturing facility is going to be built and operated in the Four Oaks Business Park, and that the capital investment and the job requirements meet the county's needs for this purpose. If you look at the schedule of grants that's included in the project summary, I wanted to go through that very quickly with you. That is on page three of the proposed resolution for Johnston County. It's a seven-year grant period on the real property. The grants will be paid from general county funds, and they are directly correlated with the investments that are made. As Mr. Johnson said, there is no risk to the county in paying out more in incentives than what Beckton Dickinson will pay in. If you look at the schedule in tax years one through three, it is a ninety percent equivalent, year four, an eighty percent equivalent, year five, a seventy percent equivalent, six, a sixty percent equivalent, and year seven, a fifty percent equivalent. In personal property, years one through five at fifty percent, and six and seven at zero percent. So, that is the proposed incentive grant for your consideration. It does meet all of the factors that are required for you to grant an incentive for economic development in the state of North Carolina. And I respectfully request that, after having heard from the Town of Four Oaks, that you listen to public comment and then take action on the proposed resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the Commissioners?
Thank you.
Go ahead and open the... Okay, okay, just checking. All right. I think at this time, Chris, do you want to introduce Beckton Dickinson, Representative?
At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Travis Anderton. He's the Vice President with Beckton Dickinson. He's flown all the way in just to see us, and he's got a five o'clock flight. So, we got a love on him while we got him.
So, I'll make this brief. Thank you so much for hosting this hall today, and thank you for consideration of our expansion. It's extremely important to us, given the current environment, to improve our supply chain resilience. We're pleased to consider this location. It's the proper location, given its proximity to our existing operations there, our distribution center. Again, we'd like to thank the Town of Four Oaks and Johnston County Economic Development. We think this is a wonderful opportunity for both of us. So, thank you.
All right. I think at this time, I was to see if there's any members of the public that wish to comment. If you would, please come forward and state your name. And in our case, it's not addressed, but general location, I don't know how you're doing, Four Oaks. I saw a hand go up back there. Well, come on.
Hi, my name's Sam Austin. I want to know what they're going to produce at this plant. Will it be environmentally sound? Will it have any effect on air and water quality?
Thank you, Sam.
Yeah, so this is a good question. This will be a sterilization facility, so it'll be terminal sterilization for manufactured product. We're using electron beam, so there's no radioisotopes used, no radioactive materials that need to be managed. There's no hazardous chemical that's used in the process. It's electricity. So, basically, the gist of the process is the product could come in palletized. The individual cases will run under the E-beam unit, and when it's done, it's safe, it's sterile, there's no residual materials, and it can go directly to the distribution facility. It's the most sustainable method of sterilization. It's the wave of the future, and we're pleased to put it here. It's the wave of the future, and we're pleased to put it here at Four Oaks. So, great question.
And I don't think we had, from the County Commissioner's side, we didn't have any email comments, okay? All right, well, at this time, I will close the public hearing for the Johnston County Commissioners.
And we'll close the public hearing for the Town of Four Oaks.
All right, at this time, I'll look to the Commissioners for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the economic development incentive grant agreement as presented.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And Town of Four Oaks will now entertain a motion to approve the incentive package.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the economic development incentive grant agreement as presented.
We have a second, by Carlos. Okay. Any comments? Here none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
All right, I think this brings some final comments from myself and the mayor. So first off, I just wanted to say that advanced manufacturing and life sciences are the cornerstone of the 21st century economy, and these two sectors are coming together in a big way in Johnston County. And Beckton Dickinson is amongst the leaders in medical devices makers, not just in Johnston County, but around the world. And we're proud that they've chosen Four Oaks Business Park in Johnston County to locate and continue their growth. I would say, Travis, that your capital investment is greatly appreciated, but I want to say that your investment in the people of Johnston County is even more appreciated. I think that's one thing that Commissioners always look at. This is an opportunity to really impact and change lives in Johnston County, and I think that's what this board and our Economic Development Advisory Board is about, is bringing those opportunities to Johnston County. So again, I want to thank you for that. I did want to say, since it's involving workforce development, I did want to point out that we have the interim President, Dr. Ken Boham, back there in the back, and that we also have one of our main folks now, and it's new title, so I said Director of Workforce Development, is that the official title?
Something like that.
Something close enough, Vic McCormick, who worked very hard, and then Vic works every day, that's his everyday job, to continue to be able to train our workforce in Johnston County. So JCC, thank you for all you do in making the opportunities available to the citizens of Johnston County. And Travis, again, thank you for your investment.
Mr. Chairman, Travis, I want to pledge to you, Johnston Community College is ready. We'll do everything we can to make sure it's successful, so I'm going to try to get to you before everybody else does, give you a couple cards while we're ready to rock and roll.
He doesn't miss an opportunity, so there.
That's great, and you know, that was exactly where I wanted to go. I wanted to make sure that Community College was introduced, because they're such an intricate part of growing industry in our area. We're hoping to have a campus here in Four Oaks, along with the alliance, to promote and to help in new industries that are coming that need to train employees. So that's something that's coming in the near future, and we're very excited about. And once again, I just want to thank everybody for being here. Four Oaks is very appreciative of everything that you guys have done. You know, it makes us look good just sitting up here, but you guys out there are the ones that did the backbone work of this, and we appreciate it very much so. And with that, I believe I will have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I got a motion and a second on my side, all in favor.
Commissioners, I look for a similar motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you all.